Everyone to the Tuesday, September seventh, the Community Development Committee meeting. We're in the chambers in council chambers in Spencerville, Ontario. The, I guess I'm calling the order, calling the meeting to order. So the second item. On our agenda is the approval of the agenda. If I can get somebody to move in second, move by councillor Hunter, second by Greg Mottler. All in favor? Number three would be the disclosure of community area interest or the general nature thereof. Anyone have any disclosures tonight? Business arising from the previous committee meeting. Minutes, if there are any. Does anyone have any business arising?
Just give me a moment, please.
Sure.
Yeah, just one issue. I spoke to CEO about this today, but on page two. We had a delegation from Terrapin Farms. And during that delegation, I asked how long it would be until they got the mess in front of that. That location cleaned up. It's quite unsightly. And so I'm just wondering if. When I talked to the CEO, they didn't have an answer. So I just wonder if they were able to reach him. So through the chair, if I may. They were able to reach Terrapin and see what the answer was.
Certainly, through, through, through the chair, we, we certainly have contacted Terrapin through email today and we're awaiting response.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That all is right?
Yeah, well, I'd just like to, when we get, can, can, I'll just, I'll just keep in touch then with the CEO, like, know when it gets. When they'll look after, because as if I recall the discussion, he indicated that they weren't going to do much to that property until after. They had got their site plan agreement in place and their building permit in hand. And that's going to be some period of time. So maybe a second question through the chair is. Have they, have they actually applied for their site plan control agreement?
I can speak to that for the chair. Um, we do not have the applications for zoning bylaw amendment or the site plan control agreement yet. Their agent reached out to me last week with some questions. Because she plans to provide the planning rationale that the township requested for those applications. So. I think the planning rationale is one of the last things required with their application, and I think that would be ready soon.
And who's their, who's their planner?
Tracy Sander.
It is Tracy, okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
No.
So moving on. Delegations and presentations, there are none. So we're on to action, information and discussion items. Number six A. Number one, which would be the telecommunications tower approval for eighty seventy-two County Road forty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the township received an application for a site plan control agreement for telecommunications tower. This is at eight zero seven-two County Road forty-four. You might remember, we reviewed it at the June meeting for community development. And then. As for the township's usual process, they applied for site plan control agreement and council passed bylaws enter into the agreement with property owners. And the agreement has not yet been executed. So now the applicant notes a few concerns. With the property owner entering into the site plan control agreement. He says, as a federal undertaking, the telecommunications infrastructure is not subject to site plan control. He also says that the agreement is worded in a way which places responsibilities for construction, maintenance, et cetera, with the landowners. And the landowners have leased the land to Freedom Mobile. So. Did a little bit of research and found it's most common for municipalities to accept a letter of undertaking. From the opponent or telecommunications towers. The site plan control process that we use isn't common. I haven't found another municipality that uses that. And I know this same agent of the applicant, I, I, we worked with him on telecommunications application before. And he, he's been kind of telling me, he says, you know, this isn't a normal process, but as long as it's working for the property owner. We're happy to follow this process. And I guess this time it's not working for the property owner. So. They've provided a draft letter of undertaking that Freedom Mobile proposes to, to provide to us. It contains a lot of the same items that would. The difference is, we no longer have an agreement with the property owner. We now have an agreement with Freedom Mobile. I did ask our legal counsel to take a look at the letter and ask if this was acceptable, since he doesn't have a lot of concerns with the content. But we should note that it's only binding to Freedom Mobile. It's not binding to the property owner. So if I, no one sees this happening, but if Freedom Mobile, it solves that, we've got no one to enforce the, the letter against. So they provided a draft letter. We asked for a clause to be included and because I remember the committee talking about. The removal of the tower that's no longer needed. And I, I found the clause that other municipalities asked to be included in that letter. Of undertaking. So we've asked for that to be included. I don't have a final copy of the letter of undertaking. But we want to have our legal counsel review it when it's final. Yeah, it's attached to this report.
And recommendation?
That committee recommended a council repeal by the twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five entering the site plan control agreement with property owners. Jonah Victor Allen and that council expects a letter of undertaking from Freedom Mobile Inc. to construct the telecommunications tower at eight zero seven-two County Road forty-four. Subject to the review of the final draft by the township's council.
Thanks. You're, you're done?
Great, yeah.
You want to go first?
Yeah, um, so this is a very interesting development as far as I'm concerned. And I read this briefing note a couple of times. And I'm, and I'm very worrisome about it. First of all, I don't, I don't want to withdraw the bylaw that we've got with the. Property owner, tender into a site agreement with the property owner. I think we still need a site plan control agreement with the property owner, although maybe it has to be written differently. Maybe it has to be, maybe it has to be completely reworded. And I, and I'm prepared to have our lawyers do that. As far as a letter of undertaking from Forbes is concerned, that's nothing. It's just a letter of undertaking. It's not an agreement. And if the tower ceases to be used for the purposes for which it was constructed, they agree to take it down, et cetera, within two years, by the way. After we appealed to them. Now, how we would ever know that, that the tower has ceased to be used as communications tower? I have no idea that, how we would know that. So. To me, there are waiting on the unanswered questions here. And I think this needs a fair amount of additional work. We've been entering into these site plan control agreements for these property developments. For these tower developments for quite some period of time. I think, didn't I read someplace back to twenty fourteen? I mean, I know that we do not have the power to regulate federal undertakings. I understand all of that. But this, in every other case, we've had a willing tower contractor or tower owner. Work through this process with us. And the last one, I think, was Wyman's, was the one on, on Wyman's farm. So for us to now just change directions, because we're getting a little bit of pushback here, I think would be a mistake. So I'm prepared to, to move a little bit, but I'm not prepared to throw the baby out with the dishwater here. Because it seems to me that if we repeal this bylaw that we've got in place with this property owner. We're basically wiping out everything that we've done back as far as twenty fourteen. Anybody that's got an agreement with us back to twenty fourteen can say, wow, those, those things are no longer applicable. You're, you're not doing that anymore. So I'm real worried about that. I still think we need a, a site agreement, a site plan control agreement with the property owner. It'd have to be reworded as to exactly what it would say. But I also don't think that. A letter of undertaking with Forbes is not completely strong enough for our purposes to make sure that that tower gets taken down and dismantled. Whose ultimate responsibility is it to take down that tower if it ceases to be used for that purpose?
I'd say it's the person who wants it down.
Well, we are the person. We are the person.
But if it, I think there's a usable lifespan of those, and it's important that. The, the cost to put something up in terms of infrastructure. If it's no longer being realized by its original purpose, we've got to see what else could use this that helps our township and our citizens. Instead of just, oh, the neighbors don't like the look of it. I think, is there a local internet provider that wants to use it? Is there a, an outsider internet provider that wants to use it? Or the RTS regulator, GPS type equipment for farms? There's a lot of uses for something like that that's unique. And I think with the, the landowner, I think there should be an agreement. Because if Freedom Mobile doesn't exist, then we should be able to come with a proposed second use. And. Be able to have a little bit of control over what that is. So this, so the system in place, I think we should, like you're saying, use so that we have that foot in the door later.
Yes, my, my biggest concern is, is what I'm hearing from the mayor as well. After, after this tower is finished and done, somebody's got to take it down. Because it becomes somewhat of a serious hazard. So as long as, as long as somebody, as long as somebody takes it down at their expense, then, then. I could go along with it, but I really don't want to repeal the bylaw.
Councillor Hunter first, and then Mr. Mottler?
Through the chair, I agree exactly with what the mayor is saying. We, we have to have some protection. Not just us, the landowner as well. You know, if freedom walk away from it, or forget I said the word freedom. If, if the company that erected the tower walks away from it on the, on the property owner's property. Then it's now it's upon the property owner if it becomes a hazard. Which I don't think would have been the intent of the property owner when that property owner went into the lease. So then we, we need some protection, you know, for that not to happen. Do I think it's up to us to make sure that there's another use for the tower if it's become redundant? No. I think it's the owner of that tower. If they should be doing their due diligence, because it'd be probably cost savings to them. To, if there is another user for it, that is acceptable within our, our bylaws. But I don't think as a township, we should be getting into the business to, to find a user for a tower.
Well, as far, as far as repealing the bylaw. Maybe it needs to reword it until we get it, when reworded and agreed to. I don't think we can repeal that bylaw until we have another bylaw states. There's a few variances or reword, there's various, you have to reword it. As far. It's the landowner that's making the money off this. They're leasing these out anywhere from three hundred to five hundred dollars a month lease agreements for this land. Put these towers on, they're making money out of it. So. They got to take some responsibility for, for that tower being there. Most of the lease agreements that I, I've seen, that the landowners have signed with them, they're pretty tight lease agreements. They're pretty well protected. They, they're. Their legal documents and they're pretty well guaranteed. The liability's on the one that's putting them, they're not, not on, on them. And most of them have a. Corporated a timeframe of when they start, how long they have to construction and how long they have to take it down, once they're, they're done with it. I think they, some of the landlord, I think, protecting themselves and protect the township. But if that tower's up there, it's not being used, and I'm not going to get paid anymore for it. I'm going to have something in that agreement. That tower's coming down over there and getting off my property. I'm not going to have a tower sitting there. And all of a sudden, I become liable for a hurricane comes through or something, and that tower comes down. Hit somebody's cow in the next field or somebody with a four wheeler gets hit with it, and then I'm liable for it. So I don't agree with this. Proposed letter. I think it's up to, I think we started this quite a few years ago, doing these site plan control agreements with the landlord. And I think. I don't know what his problem is, is he doesn't want to sign it, sign it. We're going to put something up and not sell the property to them. They just leased it to them. So it's still his property. So. I think he's got to be prepared to enter into agreement with the township, so.
Do we, to staff, do we have reasoning as to why? They. Have no interest in signing, sir?
Yeah, the Forbes Brothers gave the two reasons. One is a federal undertaking. The telecommunications infrastructure is not subject to site plan control. Therefore, site plan bylaws have no effect on or do not apply to antenna sites. And the agreement is worded in a way which places responsibilities for construction, maintenance, et cetera, with the landowners. The landowners have leased the land to Freedom Mobile, which enables and requires freedom to construct and maintain the site without interference from other parties.
So going to that, yes, that, that paragraph. That, that's. That paragraph that, that Wendy just read. That's somebody's wording. That's not law. And I, I know that the gist of it is correct. As a federal undertaking, telecommunications is not subject to site plan control. Not sure that that's a true statement. And the, and the, and the conclusion, therefore, site plan bylaws have no effect on or do not apply to antenna sites. I'm not so sure that that's a, that, that's a logical conclusion there. I don't think we can prevent them. We can't. They're not subject to our laws, but. We still have rights. We still have obligations, CEO.
Through, through the chair, I, I think the. The, the, the real issue that I think that we have at hand is if the. Owner of the property is not willing to execute that site plan control agreement, even if we execute it on our side, it's not a binding agreement. And the way that, that, that our understanding is, freedom would be able to install that antenna site. Whether there's a site plan control agreement in place or not.
So my answer to that is, go ahead, do it. Go ahead, do it. If you, if you think that your federal law trumps us, and you're not prepared to play ball with us, go ahead, do it. But we're not repealing our bylaw. Our bylaw sits. You refuse to sign it. It's on our books. So you don't, you don't want to sign it? Fair enough. Don't come to us five years from now or ten years from now with problems. Because we're going to go back to that bylaw and say, hey, listen. We have no agreement with you. It's your problem.
Yes, another thing, and, and thank you, Councillor Hunter, for bringing the monetary side into it as well, but also freedom. Is going to be making money off of this tower too, because the more they have, the more subscriptions they get and so on and so down the line. But there's another situation here too. What liability or what insurance does the landlord have? If something does happen to that tower, whether it be a hurricane, a storm or whatever. What, what liability are they required to have in the way of insurance to protect themselves? Because if that tower comes down and does some serious damage to whatever it might be, somebody's got to be responsible for it. And somebody, somebody's got to carry insurance for these things.
Yeah, and just, and just remember that the tower is actually owned by Forbes Brothers.
Yeah.
They just leased it to Freedom Mobile. So Freedom Mobile isn't going to be around to pick up the pieces.
They may not be.
Of course. Forbes Brothers, Forbes Brothers, separate entity. They're a separate entity. They can go bankrupt tomorrow when that tower still stands.
And what happens if the landowner decides to sell the land? Somebody stuck with the tower there who's responsible. So I think we've got, we've got to have controls.
No, I, I, you know, this is the first one we really had any problems with. We've done, probably half a dozen since I've been on the council. And why, you know, if, if, if the landlord's not happy with freedom or, or whatever. Don't sign it, get out of it. I mean, for us, we have to protect ourselves as, as, as a township. So I, I really don't see where, why these. You know, these guys are coming forward with it. And like you said, councillor Cameron. Freedom will be gone, or whoever has the tower. So it's got to be, there's, I mean, the landlord's got to have some kind of responsibility of, of, of. It must have insurance. Someone's got to have insurance on that tower. One gracious.
You're on the keep side. I think the only person I haven't heard from is. Yeah, we have anything to comment? Okay, so, so I'm getting, at least from my note taking, the general gist of, of keeping the bylaw and. A, a couple of comments as to trying to reword or rework. The agreement, or, or does committee want to just not repel the bylaw and leave it as is the way that it is? I think I heard on this side, reworking the wording was, was a possibility. If, is there interest in trying to continue that conversation? Or we just want to leave it the way that it, the way that it is?
Well, have, have we had any direct communication with the landlord?
To the CEO or to Wendy?
Through the chairman.
Okay, so, so our, our information about the landlord's position is coming to us via the representative from Forbes Brothers. So we're, we're, that's where we're getting our information from.
Of course, I have a question. Is this an attempt by Forbes to prevent the site plan agreements in the future, just broadly perhaps?
Oh, that's what I would think.
Could be.
Yeah. Because there's six hundred towers going to be constructed between the, to the border and Peterborough, forth the lakes in the next five years.
If they have to talk with every township and submit all these documents and such, then that's man hours on their part. Makes sense, but do we want companies like that steamrolling through communities?
Well, I think. The reality is they already do. I think it probably can, but, but I think. What the group or what the committee is saying is that keeping our bylaw in there protects us. Even if, even if they don't sign it, or even if they don't technically have to sign it. Once this is documented.
Yes, I, I think the concerns from the property owner. Are, are that right now they have a lease agreement with Freedom Mobile. And they feel that that agreement protects them. It solves the responsibility for maintenance to take it down. For upkeep with all the responsibilities of Freedom Mobile. Like, if they enter into a site plan control agreement with the township. That puts all of the responsibility on the property owner, which is appealing to us as a township. Because if, if something goes wrong, it's much more difficult to go after Freedom Mobile. To recoup our, our costs or to correct the situation that is suffered by the property owner. Because if the community is collapsed, we can recover our costs with the property owner much more easily. So I can see how for the property owner, it is much more appealing to just stick with their lease agreement with Freedom Mobile. And not entering into agreement with the township. I'm wondering if the committee would consider. Asking staff to get legal advice on what our options are. In regards to rewording the site plan control agreement, or is a site plan control agreement even a reasonable option? This is based on what Forbes Brothers has told me and my limited research. With the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and the EORN recently published a tower saving resource guide. So it's the information I could find on those resources that we could ask our legal counsel.
I think from what the table has said so far, I don't. Get the sense that anybody's interested in repelling the bylaw. So as far as the recommendation goes, if I read the table correct. For now, at least, there's not any interest in repelling the bylaw. Having a legal opinion, probably not a bad idea. But let's see what the, what the table says.
Through the chair, Wendy took my thought. Doesn't hurt to get a legal opinion. Are the, what is being presented? Is it factually correct? Or is it, as I think somebody has said, is it a summary, somebody's summary of, of the law? So what, what do our legal people say?
Code is on and on, yeah.
I, I agree.
Well, I think we need, need to get legal involved here, because I think this. I would guess that this whole telecommunications act is going to take some, provincial government's going to have to take some serious looks at this pretty soon. Because when this is brought in, we were talking a few towers straight across, across, not, not a tower every. Eight or five or six miles apart across there. I think it's something they're going to have to seriously look at. And I don't think we're going to be in any township that is going to say, hey. We want to save where, how these towers are being put up or where they're. Controlled or where they're being put.
Mr. Mayor? Do you ask the legal?
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem getting that. I, I would like to, I would like to see the exact wording, but. I'm, I'm pretty familiar with that. The basic structure that we're being told is correct, that we don't have power to regulate. But that is, we don't have power to regulate the towers, but that's not quite the same as entering into a control agreement with the property owner.
Well, I think legal will clear that.
Yeah.
Legal will clear that up if we direct them.
Yeah.
You're getting that, right?
So. And, and maybe our, maybe our agreement, maybe our, our. Our site plan control agreement is a bit, maybe it goes a bit too far. You know, and I'm prepared to accept the fact that maybe it goes a bit too far and we have to have a, a rewording of it somehow. So that we're not infringing on a federal right, but we are protecting municipal situation.
And we'll get that through, through the report or whatever. Yeah, if we ask the right question. Okay, so councillor Cameron?
Yeah, legal for sure.
Councillor Delma?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, and so. So do we need to do anything further on this than tonight, Wendy? I think the recommendations. Not going to pass. I'm not going to put it to the question, I don't think.
Move to the first. To the next meeting.
Refer to the next meeting. So do we need to vote on deferral then?
Don't need to.
Rebecca? So I need a second then, so take your. Councillor Hunter or Greg, whoever. And then do I need to vote then on deferral as well, Rebecca? Yes, in favor of deferral, everyone?
Yes.
You know, so great. Okay, so did you want to comment before we?
Just a question, sure. What is the question? We are going to post a legal, because we have to be very, in my opinion, having asked legal questions in my. Real life. You want to be very specific in the question you're asking them. You know. You need to ask them two or three. You don't want to ask them an open-ended question. You want to ask them a closed question. So that they give you a specific answer to the question you're asking. But I, I just think we need to be.
Do you want to clear out the questions that got asked? Is that what you're? I don't, I mean, that's really, it's that function.
Through the chair, I, I, I'm pretty sure that we can get the, the, the questions and, and the answers.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
And so we can move on. Uh, number two, Wendy, do you want to? Go ahead with this one.
So this is for additional information to the revision, the plan of subdivision and application for zoning amendment for the Meadowlands North subdivision. At the July Community Development. At the July community development committee meeting, the committee um. Reviewed a request to revise the approved draft plan of subdivision for Meadowlands North. The committee requested some additional information regarding the traffic impact assessment and serviceability report. Um, so the township has retained career gallery to assist with peer review of these studies. They didn't find any major concerns, um, but a few minor questions were raised and those questions are now being addressed by the applicant or their engineer. Um, I included the findings from both of these reports in the agenda package. Um. I'm not gonna read the entire staff report, but I do, I do just want to highlight that the next steps are to have a combined public meeting. For both the revised subdivision and application for the zoning amendment application. And they're scheduled to be held on September sixteenth at the Cardinal Legion. Um, it's just the larger space for us and um. It's also um, in, in Cardinal, so closer to the residence that it would have more of an effect on. Um. Following a public meeting and provide we have a response to the questions that staff have raised of the. The um, Nova Tech would prepare uh, draft conditions. And we would bring them forward to, my hope is to bring them forward to council, which could be done as early as September twenty seventh council meeting. But I wanted to flag that because that would mean it doesn't come back to C D C.
Want to start?
Yes, if, if I could. So we're having a public meeting or public meetings. On September the sixteenth in Cardinal Legion, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and these public meetings are meetings that are held under the Planning Act, is that correct? All right, so now we've got two issues. One is a subdivision application. Uh, 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 an amendment to a subdivision application, which is one issue. And the other issue is a zoning amendment application. So that says to me that we have two separate meetings. One to deal with the subdivision application amendment to the subdivision application. The other to deal, to deal with zoning. And the reason that, that I'm trying to split those two issues into two separate meetings is the following. And, and that is this, these meetings that are held under the Planning Act. There are formal meetings and they have, they're, they're supposed to take a certain formality to them. Insofar as the, uh, the chair of that meeting. Let, let's deal first of all with the zoning uh, change, I'm joining, I'm in. And, and to me, it, the meeting should work that. If I'm the chair, I'm asking. First, if there's anybody that's going to speak in favor of these zoning amendment changes, these zoning changes. And then everybody that speaks from that point on, I know is speaking in favor. Then when that finishes, now is there anyone that wants to speak against it? And then from that point on, anybody that's speaking is speaking against it. And the reason I make that distinction is because when we held the meeting for thirty two David Street. There were, there were four people that spoke, but it was very, and it was very clear. What their intent was. But, but they did not specifically say, and if you read the minutes of the meeting. They did not specific, three of those speakers did not specifically say, I am against this zoning amendment. They did not say that at the meeting. So you can take, just reading the minutes of that meeting and, and that's the way I interpreted. The minutes of that meeting to council when I, when we dealt with it at council. Strictly adhering to those minutes. Only one person spoke against those zoning bylaw amendments. The others raised questions. They raised issues, they were off topic, they were all over the place, but they were not specifically either for or against. So that's why I'm hoping that this meeting in Cardinal will be um, really structured to the point where. When the minutes come out, I know that that person was speaking against because the chair asked, is there anybody who wants to speak against?
To, uh, to the C A O if, or to Wendy or whoever the go to, if. There were to be two meetings, could they both be advertised? Would there be enough time to advertise both of them for the same day, just having them? Um, one at say six or whatever the normal time would be and then one immediately following? So that we could. You both.
They, they will already been advertised. And they will advertise for sixteen on September sixteenth. Um, confirmed with our planner ahead of time that yes, it's common for the meetings to be held together. The comments would be for both the zoning amendment application and the revision to subdivision, they're dependent on each other. So if you're, if you have comments for one, it's comments for both. The planning act also gives us um. Uh, also allows the upper tier municipality to ask, uh, the lower tier municipality to hold the, the meeting for the. Subdivision as well, and we have to provide certain information to them where we're holding that, that public meeting. It makes sense for costs um, to, to have them together.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so.
You're just trying to.
Yeah.
The confusion.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, fair, fair comments, I think. Um, Connor, you're, you're next.
Through the chair, just uh, wanted to. Just pal back to what, what Mr. Ray was saying. In the same, in the same way that. Legally, you can bind a meeting and the people speaking for and against a project like what you were describing. Shouldn't I be? Fair on the other side of the, of the discussion, if there's no one there to speak for something. Why would it proceed? If, if a big company wants to come in and we have to do. Public meetings for what they want to do for their business, shouldn't a representative be there and speak? Ahead of the people against it to clarify questions and address and, and really use the time for the open house.
Uh. Speak to that one, is it procedureally, is that in the necessity?
Uh, sure, it's, it's not required. It, it's certainly nice to have the applicants on.
Can I take that back? But, but, but I think Connor is right dead on. I mean, if, if the proponent is not prepared to speak in favor of what he's asking. And put that as part of the minutes. He puts himself at risk of council saying, I got the minutes in front of me, nobody spoke in favor off the table. I mean, we have every right to say that. And so to, to say, well, they don't need to speak in favor of it. I mean, I know they have their planner there and I know they've got their planner's report. But the fact that the proponent fails to speak in favor of what they're asking to me is to their detriment. Really to their detriment, because those are, those minutes are important. Those minutes are not just. A piece of paper. We're obligated to have regard to those minutes. It's important that the proponents speak in favor. And the, and I think proponents should be told, you, you better have somebody speaking in favor of your proposal. And I know that on that specific one, you know, there, it, you know, it was a, I'm gonna say it was a, uh. And in these small towns, it's always the same way. People don't want to get into. A bad situation in a small meeting, but the proponent has to be prepared to, to state his case. And make it part of the minutes.
Well, I agree, it's nice to have a proponent speaker, uh, at a minute. Ah. But the proponent has already filed all their documentation and their planning and the reasoning why it's a good thing, so. To, to come, as the mayor said, in small towns. Uh, most of the time when you're getting these situations, the ones that are opposed to it. Are, are more just feelings than they are facts. So it gets into.
Yeah.
I can see why the proponents don't want, want to speak. They filed all the documentation, they filed all the reasons why it's a good. Good thing, that's all been filed with council. Yes, we gotta pay attention to the, what the minutes of the meetings are. We also gotta pay serious attention to all the legal documents and stuff that have been filed with us too, so.
Good ones. What he said, yeah, Cody?
Um. Because we're dealing here with the Meadowland subdivision. Um. I just want to uh, be assured that with all these various changes that are going on. The buffer zone will still remain intact. So seeing or not even.
So, so, so through the chair, uh, as, as the revised uh. Uh, subplan application does have the uh, buffer zone remaining as, as.
Thank you.
Is in the, um, and maybe I missed this somewhere, so correct me if I'm wrong, but looking at um. The, I guess, page twenty seven of, of ninety nine, which is the uh, the findings and recommendations, which is seven point O. Did we get a copy of that in equal, like the full traffic study?
No, no, so chair, um. At the July, I want to say July C D C meeting, um. The committee reviewed the, the proposal to a, amend the draft plan of subdivision. And their planners, uh, their planning rationale from their planner and Nova Tech's um, report on the application as well. But the committee requested some additional information about the traffic impact study and the service service ability report. So um, I just included the, the, the summaries and the conclusions from both of those reports.
There is a more, more full summary report though.
Yes, which has been peer reviewed by an engineer at Career Gallery.
And. But we have a copy of.
Through, 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 through the chair, really, it's, it's not a function of.
Okay.
That, that, that study.
So a new issue?
Yep.
Okay, so this is a new issue and I'm at our briefing note on page twenty five of ninety nine. And I'm just going to the heading that says background and I'm going down to the third paragraph. I, I just want to.
Just hold for one second, Mr. Mayor, I missed, I missed.
Okay, so I'm on page twenty five of ninety nine.
Yes. Third paragraph?
Yeah, third paragraph. It says the revised draft plan dated March twenty twenty one proposes, well, first of all, let me go back to staff. This subdivision started out as forty nine single family, uh, fully detached. Then it's, it's presently sits at one oh six, which is a combination of townhouses and singles. Now, this amendment that we're going to make proposes to take it to one forty six. And uh, proposes to develop the subdivision with a total of a hundred and forty six residential units. The draft plan includes forty blocks of semi-detached dwellings. Twelve blocks for townhouse dwellings. Four reserve blocks and six blocks for open space and public streets. Now, the, the reason I'm pointing out that last sentence, six blocks for open space and public streets. Is that it has been a longstanding tradition. Right back to the seventies, that in these plans of subdivision, the, the, the proponent is required to propose, set aside some land for park purposes. Or open space uses. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because we all understand that one of the challenges that we're all facing is. How do we get the prices down? How do we try to get towards more affordable housing? Well, if, if the proponent here has to set aside six blocks for open spaces. That's at least six buildings that he can't build and spread his sewer and water and motor cost over those six buildings. So the reason I'm bringing that up is, do we really want? Uh, in view of the pressures that we're under to try to get. More cheaper. Housing into the marketplace, do we really want him to set aside six blocks for open space? The streets, I understand, and the streets are probably identified as blocks. But do we really want him to do that when we know that by building on those blocks, he can spread those sewer, water, road costs. Over a wider number of units. So I'm just bringing that up as a question, because I know a lot of other municipalities and townships in uh, in the United Counties. Are doing the same thing. They're no longer requiring that open space set aside, if I can put it that way. And councillor Cameron just brought up the whole question that there is a big buffer zone, which could be used as a park area between the north subdivision and the south subdivision.
Do you wanna go?
Yeah, I just, uh. All these uh, subdivisions where we've had over, over the years, a lot of them, we've, we've uh. Public space, it's been a lot of, over the years, we've allowed some of them to go back and to them to be built on. And, and I don't think our, our goal at the time was to lower the price of the housing. Down, but we were ending up with these blocks of land we had to be maintained. And nobody would really use them. We're going in and mowing and trying to keep the brush down on them and stuff and it was costing us money. And, and the township already has their recreational areas and their park areas and stuff we look after. And I know this is the reason of, in a lot of the other municipalities, they've got rid of them. It because we're just putting the burden on the township to have these blocks of land that they had to look after. And, and it would cost them money rather than making any, any money on them. And there are certain areas, as I see in the cities, certain areas where they take over vast chunks of city land, they want a new park area. In there, but, or in Cardinal. We've already got a riverfront, we've, we've got our, our rich and parkland. All, over there, we've got the others, little parks that we got, uh. In, in there, like. I kind of agree, we don't really need.
Is there?
More there, so.
Sorry to cut you off. Uh, to staff, is there any other reason why we would require keeping six blocks?
Um, through the chair, so not all of those blocks are suitable for development. I see there are, I'm looking, sorry, it's not included in the agenda package. It was in the July agenda package, the, the plan of, the proposed plan, the subdivision, but. Um, there's two blocks that are open space in between two subdivisions that I know is very important to the residents in the subdivision subdivision. There are two blocks that are just pathways from those um, uh, offer areas to the, um, to the road there. And uh, there are other blocks that are meant for roadways that are connecting. The subdivision to have a hospital, to your development or to Gil Street and then one of these.
You had commented on that before, do you wanna?
Yeah, I, it, I could be wrong here, but I, 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 from what I gather. The open space and the metal, or the buffer zone in the Meadowland subdivision. And I think uh, uh, Mr. Grant could possibly correct me if, if I, if I'm wrong. But I'm under the impression that all of the. Uh, houses that are bought to that open space, those people have been mowing that. That total area, from what I understand. Am I correct, Mr. Grant on, on that?
Uh, through, through the chair, I would say that most of that buffer zone is, is being maintained.
By the residents.
By the residents.
Yes, yeah, so, because I don't think our staff cuts that. But I could be wrong.
Uh, our staff have not cut that in, in some time.
Thank you. That's all, that's all, that's all I have. It's just that, that buffer zone, believe me, folks, is a very, very contentious subject. Uh. Just putting that out there.
You wanna go?
Yeah, I would say a project. Called Meadowlands should have as much open area as possible. And if that's what the township wants to approve by, by quadrupling the size of a subdivision. Uh, I, I think the township should maintain part of the, part of those open spaces. Um, although if there is an ability to have small stores in those spaces, I think that would be good. But it doesn't, I don't think that's what people want to do. I, I doubt anyone at this table would say that they would support a convenience store in the middle of the neighborhood. And I don't think if you're gonna go against that, that you should be trying to fill in with as many houses as you can. But then in other parts of the township, do things against affordable housing. Just my opinion.
Wendy, what, what do we need, what do you need? There's no recommendation, it's just an info item. Um, so. So both meetings on the sixteenth, starting at what time?
I understand with the forty blocks for semi-detached, twelve blocks for town, what's a four reserved blocks for, what does that mean?
Sorry, I don't have an answer for you, I was summarizing based on Nova Tech's report that was provided in July.
Are they not the blocks that we always require where that they, we don't allow them to build on until they have their roads and stuff built? Most subdivisions, we had an agreement in there, we maintain, wouldn't allow them to build on certain building blocks. Until they had their roads and their lights up, and then give them, release those blocks to allow them to go ahead and build on.
We've done that with subdivisions in the past.
I know that, through the chart, I know that's happening on Albert Street, that one, that one law is being held back, held back.
When I was going over that, that's one of the things in the agreement was in the traffic study was. That one of the entrances to was on Gil Street. Was gonna extend on on to do it there. Was it brought up in in the traffic there on Gil Street? To limit parking on one side of that street, street, if that was gonna be the entrance into the subdivision, because that's a real tight street now, like. You can down there, get a truck parked inside there, you gotta kind of weave.
Question to staff, was that in the traffic study, do you know?
Through the chair, I think the traffic study mentioned to not have. Have you truck traffic now?
There there would be no mention in the in the study with respect to.
If we wanted to look at that in the future, that's. So, everybody good? So, now, which will, I guess if I had one comment before I go to number three. As we're coming to number three. Revising plans of subdivision that where there are services and connectability to services. Seems like a very good solution to. What we're about to go into. So, for that reason, seeing something that was forty nine, single-family units turn into one hundred and forty six. That might include some much more affordable style housing, I think that that's probably the right way. To go, so I I quite like the the new plan of subdivision. Moving on to number six three, which is information item, additional residential units, I think this'll probably cut this conversation pretty short. With the information that you're going to provide, so fire, fire away.
Sure, good share. So at last month's meeting, committee reviewed a housing affordability task force report prepared by the counties regarding. Official plan and zoning bylaw considerations for additional residential units. And we have quite a wholesome discussion about the about the report. The committee have requested clarification on Bill one oh eight specifically. The intent is to allow an additional residential unit, we call them second dwelling units, within a main dwelling. In addition to an additional residential unit as an accessory structure to call second dwellings. So the county's report that we looked at has the following clarification. Would you like, sure, would you like me to read it? In two thousand nineteen, Bill one oh eight, More Homes, More Choices Act, allows one additional residential unit in the main dwelling. And one additional dwelling unit in an accessory structure for a total of three potential units on a property. With a detached, semi-detached or row house residential dwelling. This resulted in changes to section sixteen three of the Planning Act to reflect Bill one oh eight and requires. Official plans contain policies authorizing up to two additional residential units per residential dwelling. The interpretation of county staff of three total units per property has been confirmed with Ministry of Municipal Affairs or Housing Staff. So Bill one oh eight was implemented through Ontario Regulation two hundred ninety nine dash nineteen. Which set up specific regulations for additional residential units. And the provisions in section four point eight of our draft new zoning bylaw comply with these regulations. So I've included in the agenda package just an excerpt from the Planning Act, so you could see section sixteen three. Also, the Ontario Regulation two ninety nine dash nineteen, and. I I know we've already reviewed the draft zoning bylaw, and we're going to review it some more, but I included excerpt from. Our draft zoning bylaw that has definitions for second dwelling units, I can highlight some things here, I don't wanna.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, so I'm I'm looking at our draft new zoning bylaw, page thirty four of ninety nine in the agenda package. And it, I've got the definitions for second dwelling, which which mean a second dwelling in a separate building from the primary residence. And then there's also a second dwelling unit, and that is a second dwelling that's within the single dwelling, so think of it as like an apartment unit. And then section four point eight has specific use provisions. First, it has general provisions, and these are gonna apply to either or to both, a second dwelling and to a second dwelling unit. So it has things like it needs to be connected to the same water supply and sewage disposal system, that's principal dwelling. It also has things like parking and. That the second dwelling unit and second dwelling shall be included in the calculations of lot coverage, which I know came up at the last meeting. And then if I go a little bit further, I have provisions that only apply to the second dwelling unit, so that apartment unit within the main dwelling. And then if I go a little bit further, I've got provisions that only apply to the second dwelling, so that if it's like a separate, a separate building. Which I would point out, because we discussed it at our last meeting, that a second dwelling shall not be permitted in relation to a town.
If I may, before we open this to discussion, was this, as we saw last time, went to a rather like the discussion and and it. And I think, you know, our next item. Is short-term accommodations in our zoning provisions. We're forced to, and I don't think, you know, from at least the way that I have my notes, that the the general consensus around the table was. That we, we didn't really agree with Bill one oh eight. But we're being forced to to add it and adopt it into our official plan. In our zoning bylaws with. I mean, the idea of Bill one oh eight is to create more affordable residential homes. And the reason we have to to change our official plan would be to adopt this idea. So, within our specific use provisioning for residential use. Is a specific use provision as a short-term rental. The short-term rentals aren't going to be the solution to. Affordable housing.
Are we not mixing up two things?
Well, um, I, yes, but no, I mean. I think it's still part of this, just the the original discussion of Bill, Bill one oh eight and what its intent intent is. And and what exactly can be allowed in us in that secondary dwelling and what can, like, are there limits as to what it can be used for? Like, are we allowed, basically, are we allowing everybody to build a bed and breakfast, and or not a bed and breakfast, but a an Airbnb in their backyard?
Not by definition.
Okay, through, through the chair to.
Sorry, through through the chair, this might provide some clarity, I'm looking at the Ontario Regulation. Under two, and then for an additional residential residential unit may be occupied by a person regardless of whether. The person who occupies the additional residential unit is related to the person who occupies the primary residential unit, and. The person who occupies the primary additional residential unit is the owner of the lot, maybe that doesn't provide the clarity you're looking for, but I think you're trying to say that. We don't get to determine who stays in the additional residential unit.
Okay, so I just wanted to throw that out before, sorry, I know Mr. Mayor, you wanted to comment, Connor wanted to comment on it as well, so fire, fire away.
Well, I just want, right now, I'm just focused on these additional residential units, because I think we've. But you, when I'm, when I'm referring to these excerpts from our new zoning bylaw, it seems to me that we've done everything. That the recent changes to provincial legislation require us to do. And if the, if we incorporate all of these excerpts into our new zoning bylaw, which they're in the draft now. Do we still have an obligation to change our official plan? We we don't need to do any changes to our official plan, do we?
Good, Chair, our our official plan was adopted around the same time that.
Yeah.
Bill one oh eight was, and it it does have provisions for additional residential units. I've noticed one sentence in the official plan that does need to be changed. I think it allows either or, a second dwelling unit or a second dwelling. So we'll we'll have to do a payment to the official plan to correct that, other than that, our official plan.
Okay, so, anyway, going back to this one, which is page thirty four, I think we've done everything that we're required to do. The whole question of whether these are. Short-term accommodations or long or or dwelling units where people. I mean, short-term accommodations is defined in someplace else, these, these are not built for that purpose, and I don't think they're defined for that purpose. So I'm happy with what I've got here on page thirty five, thirty four.
Can I stop you for one sec?
Yeah.
Could they, in your mind, then be used for short-term accommodations?
No, not, not if we follow the definition of what short-term accommodation is, that I see on, that I read when I reviewed my package. Like before, we're gonna get to it in a minute, and when I read the definition of what short-term accommodation is. I don't, I don't think, I don't think it can be used for that purpose.
Excluding, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I I just think.
I I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, yeah, and 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 I'm hoping that when we get to short-term accommodations, we're gonna take a much more. A much more hard line view.
I I wish we were doing short-term accommodations first.
Okay, this second. Okay, good point, you know, that would clarify that issue.
Because what I'm afraid of, these guys are gonna build secondary units or additional units, and then somewhere down the line, they're gonna become. An Airbnb.
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
My other, and my other point is, when we get to the Airbnb, I mean. I'm, I certainly hope that we have have some some strong debate as to whether or not the owner has to be living on the premises.
With, with everyone's. Permission from committee. Can we say that from an informational standpoint, that that we've received the information from staff? On on the residential unit portion, and then can we go to number four and move on to number four? And under short-term accommodations, we can relate it back to to residential use as well? Is that?
Makes sense to me.
That makes sense, that, like, we've received the information, now we can move to number four, and we can discuss it, and if somebody wants to relate it back to. Uh, any of that information that we received that we can, is that nodding your heads? That's all, yeah, okay, so then let's move on to number four then.
Yes, I just wanna recognize the fact that in, when we're dealing with this item, additional residential units, three.
Yes.
I just wanna recognize the fact that Wendy's done a a great job of giving us excerpts from other zoning bylaws. And other official plans to see how other municipalities have have dealt with these issues that were shocking. I just wanna recognize that.
Yeah, good. Uh, and then let's open it up for for this discussion, and I think you sounded like you wanted to to go first, so why don't you fire?
So we're at, we're at four now, yes, my 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 major concern is with with an Airbnb or bed and breakfast. And I know that in breakfast and Airbnb is classified a little bit differently. I I've stayed in, I've stayed in both, you know, types of units, I've stayed in both types of units where the. The owner of the premises did not stay in the premises overnight, and I have, where they did stay in the premises. And I I I highly recommend that the owner, the must be on site. In any one of those two establishments. Safety, safety issues are 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 major concern concern there. And that's that, that's my biggest, that's my biggest concern on 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 the short term.
Well, I, that kind of policing, I don't think would be within the township's ability, but it also. It excludes an infinite amount of possibilities, what if someone's house-sitting, what if someone's watching pets? Someone's taking this opportunity to go somewhere, and they have someone taking care of their cat while they're away, you know. You you can't, you can't police that, that. I I don't think that's possible, but just back to what the Deputy Mayor said a few minutes ago. Short-term accommodations like Airbnb are often a life-saving stopgap between people who otherwise would be homeless. And I I don't think we should be in the business of trying to limit that possibility within our own borders. I don't think we could avoid that freight train of new technology of services offering. That ability for people to make small amounts of money that sometimes help make their mortgage. I I don't think. That the fascination that that this group of people have with Airbnb is is worth. Is is worth the. Opposite of goodwill that will come of it, you can enforce it. I think it's a waste of time, I think we need to adapt and make things like the the property. Distance to the property line, septic, you know, building code things, but not how people use their property. I don't think you can spend too much more time on that and get hung up on it.
Mr. Mayor.
Well. I I can see Connor's point of view, but I I I can't agree with it, because. Number one, there's a big difference between small towns and cities, that's the first thing, and it doesn't matter how you cut the cake. We have three small villages and a and a big rural area. And I'm prepared to to take as much time as it takes to try to regulate these short-term accommodations, whether they're. Bed and breakfasts or whether they're Airbnb, and let me just say that Airbnb is just another. It's just another bed and breakfast by a different term, except that, except that it's marketed in a different way. So I don't make a distinction, and I don't see a definition that would distinction, make a distinction between Airbnb and bed and breakfast. And I'd like to see us spend the time to try to define and regulate. Airbnbs and bed and breakfast, and one for sure way of regulating Airbnb is that if it's advertised publicly. As an Airbnb, it's illegal, period, end of discussion, and that's where, that's prima facie evidence that you've breached the bylaw. And and we can create a bylaw that is that tight. Once we see the advertisement, you're guilty, period, end of discussion, that ends it. And we can, we can enforce that, because we have that right, now. Is it the right thing to do? I think it's the right thing to do in a small town like this. In a small area like this, and the the idea of using. Bed and breakfast and Airbnb as short-term accommodations for people that can't afford housing, I I don't think stands up. Because there there are a hundred other mechanisms to deal with those people, first of all, there's a cost to. An Airbnb, it's a, it's a daily or a weekly cost, and there's a daily or a weekly cost to a bed and breakfast. The the kind of people that are, that are destitute and homeless are not, they don't have that. they don't have that money, so they're looking someplace else for assistance. That's not what we're trying to regulate here. What we're trying to regulate and what we're trying to stop, I hope, is the, is the, is the unwanted's that come in from the cities into our small towns and create problems. I mean, I think Wendy's words has laid out.
Through, through the chair, hold on.
I think Wendy has laid out a, a, a quite a number of problems that we can see developing here. We know that they develop because we've seen them in other places. So I'm just urging the committee to take a hard-line look at this.
Through, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through myself, I guess, to, to staff. Airbnb or BNB requires, if I'm not mistaken, requires the owner to, to be present in our bylaws, correct?
Yeah, so do you mind if I expand on that?
Yeah, sure, fire.
Thank, thank you.
I just wanna, if there's confusion, I just want it clear.
So right now, in our existing zoning bylaw, the way a bed and breakfast is defined, it, 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 I've interpreted it to include a short-term rental like Airbnb. In our draft new zoning bylaw, a bed and breakfast is defined more clearly where it states that the owner is present at the time, the, so property owner is present at the time. So that's fine, we've got more clarity for what a bed and breakfast is, but what it leaves us with is no provisions for a short-term rental. Do we want to have no provisions for a short-term rental? We don't have any way of enforcing things. I'm not. I, I think what, what I've proposed here is if we'd like provisions for short-term rental, there's some things that we could consider here. The definition I provide for short-term accommodation is just one that I have developed based on the definition we have in our draft new zoning bylaw for a bed and breakfast, but the difference is that the owner may, may not be present at the time. The thirty days is a suggestion based on what another municipality has done a lot of research on short-term accommodations, what, what, what they came up with. So I think it's subject to, to change, but it's a, a definition that we can start with in order to have a discussion.
Okay, Cody, you're actually next, so fire away.
I, I guess I just wanna speak against interfering with, with any kind of Airbnb operations. I've seen, I know of at least one in the village of Cardinal, and these, these people that frequent these, these places are, are not a nuisance. They're tourists. They come line off four oh one, we're midpoint between Montreal and Toronto. They're bringing money into our township that we wouldn't otherwise have. Uh, you know, Cardinal is not a college town. It's not a university town, we're not gonna have party animals taking up these places and causing all kinds of ruckus. You know, I, I think interfering with these types of small businesses is, is really, I, I, I'm adamantly against it.
No, I think there's a big difference here, like, the bed and breakfast, we've had them in the township for years, years, people operating them. They've operated pretty successfully. The owners have to be present. They regulate, they come through the health authority if you run the bed and breakfast and providing meals, you've gotta be inspected by the health authorities, your kitchen stuff to provide. And gotta make certain accommodations. The, the problem, I, I had no problem with bed and breakfasts. My problem with Airbnb, and I think the government's trying to overlook this, and city of Toronto is a good example of Airbnb is causing a disaster in the city of Toronto for accommodations because all the houses are being converted to Airbnb, and they're making as much money by renting for the weekends. And, and as Cody says, Airbnb people are generally well-off people that are traveling and tourists, and they're spending money. So they create no, no problem for the owner that's renting these Airbnbs. So any problem they're creating, creating, and I think the government hadn't looked at this, is that, is they wanna accommodate more affordable housing, and they're taking this affordable housing off the market because I can rent a house for fifteen hundred dollars a month. I, I can rent it air, Airbnb for a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday night, night for six or seven hundred dollars at someplace close to the water, or close to a festival or something's going on. And, and I know it's gonna be left in good shape because you signed it, I'm saying, let them, clean or anything, you gotta pay for it, so. So it, it's.
Yeah.
Like, I think the only thing I would suggest is that we have some kind of a licensing permit in certain areas in the township. I think Wendy has mentioned there, coming across private, on private roads, that Airbnb wouldn't be allowed because you have to cross other people's property to, to, to get to where they're, they're renting. I can see some kind of licensing thing to stop this along the river. On a private road, street cottage is there, and somebody buys one, wants to use it for an Airbnb, and you're on a private road, you're paying a, we don't want all this traffic coming down every other, every weekend, so.
We can't police that as a township, it's not our world. Private road.
We don't allow, if we have a licensing process for Airbnb.
No, that's what I'm saying, if we do allow that on private roads, then we're in trouble because we can't police it, we have no control.
One, one of the areas, especially in a large center such as, such as Toronto, what, what, what people are doing, they're buying apartments, or they're, they're, they're renting apartments. They're not there, then they turn them over, they rent them as, as Airbnbs. And this is causing problems in the apartment buildings with the tenants that live there year-round because you've got transient's coming in and out, and, and all, out of all hours of the night, so on. And in some cases, the, the apartment association has said that you can't do that. If you don't live in the apartment, you can't, you can't rent it out. And, you know, I, I, I can take you to one building where the, the owner will meet you downstairs and take you out. So he can say that, well, this is a guest, you know, it's my apartment, I'm taking a guest to my apartment. And then he'll leave, and, and, and you have the, you, you have the, the apartment for the night or two nights, or whatever it might be. These Airbnb people are making big dollars off of, off of rentals. I mean, it's not. It, it, it's not a, a minor charge. Your, your, your panel, in, in most cases, for, for a, for a one, one-bedroom apartment, you're paying over a hundred dollars a night. So. I, I, I just prefer, again, I just go back to what, when it comes to Airbnb. And again, with Airbnb and BNB, you gotta remember that most BNB's, you have your bed and your breakfast, that's BNB. And you're, and you're governed by the health unit, you're governed by, by other, other bodies, aren't you? And as, as councillor Hunter said, in the township, they've been very successful for the most part, and, and done a, done a pretty good job, but with, with Airbnb. Now, there was a case in Toronto where a woman was throwing the, the, the chairs off the, off the building. That was right on, right on the Queen's, yeah, all the building. And, you know, it was crashing, just this type of.
Well, it's that tall, isn't it?
Yeah, 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 well, they're pretty tall.
Do, do, do we have a problem here with Airbnb, like, is there a law?
Well, yes, actually, there is. Now, now that you mention it, I'd just like to point out, there's one in Cardinal. Uh, it's on Dundas Street, and there's no parking. And when that is rented in the, in the, in the winter time, many times, and I complained about this last winter, that there were cars parked overnight right, right in front of the Airbnb. We've gotta have parking laws, we've gotta have parking rules for, for, for Airbnbs where they either have to have slots set aside or make arrangements somewhere where these people can.
No, what I'm saying is, I guess you missed my point. Is, is there a need for it in our township? Like, when you see our motels aren't filled up.
Entrepreneurship is entrepreneurship, you know? If somebody thinks they can make money out of Airbnb, so will, so, so be it.
If, if I can interrupt just for one second, and, and I, this is why I think the information I had on Bill 108 comes into, into this because I have several clients that don't want to be landlords because of the landlord-tenant act. But they own multiple properties and rent them out as short-term accommodations, not like what Connor was suggesting for transient housing. It's not affordable housing, it's not, it's not, not affordable for the average person. It's for executives that come in from, you know, it used to be Procter and Gamble, you know, now it's 3M. And they go for a week or two weeks while, while they're coming in, they don't have to stay in a hotel, they can, they can rent through these units. Unfortunately, what that does is it, is it takes those houses off, off of the market and keeps people in, in the city from, from buying them. And while it may not seem much, but if it's ten houses, it's ten houses that local people aren't, that aren't buying and that are being used for short-term accommodations, and we find ourselves with Bill 108. You know, making changes to official plans and changing the way that our communities are being developed. For me, it just, it seems like a, a big, a big issue, and with what Connor said, you know, there are attempts to change, you know, things like churches and especially on my street in Rockville, or changing a church into a six, six-unit short-term accommodation, transitional housing. To me, that's, of, you know, what, what's beyond affordable, it's actually, you know, I think it's run by the county, is correct? I think they're the ones doing it.
Oh, yeah.
The Seventh Adventist Church.
The First Church?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Eight units.
Yeah, eight units, so that, that is.
A hundred and fifty-seven thousand a unit for four hundred square feet.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that, though, like, is, is, you know, for that transition to get people from homelessness to that, should there be more, absolutely, I a hundred percent support that. But to me, this conversation is a little different in that Bill 108 seems to be counterintuitive if, if, if people are going to take advantage of that and our township will rent them into short-term accommodations, buy up existing properties, or investors are gonna buy up and bet those properties, and then try to intensify those areas and rent them out in short term. I don't think that that was the ultimate idea we had with Bill 108, so. Come on, sorry.
When this, or Cameron said a few minutes ago, just shows the, the length people go to script the rules by exploiting the loophole where the owner goes up with them, and then suddenly they're the guests. I don't think that is worth the township's time to try to regulate, and if it's not Airbnb, it's gonna be another company, it's gonna be their competitor, it's gonna be the Lyft to the Uber. Right, and I don't think we should put a lot of time into trying to regulate, like I said, how people use their property. But I think a burn permit type license is something that maybe should be looked at. Again, that's hard to regulate, and I, I can't imagine how that would work, or if it would even be used. But snitching on people for advertising that short-term accommodation isn't the way to do it either. And if you could fake an ad, i- i- if you wanted to start something against your neighbor, it'd be very easy to throw an ad up on Kijiji's, just take photos of their house.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's a whole can of worms that isn't gonna go away because once people have an idea that, oh, hey, I could turn an Amish shed into a short-term accommodation as long as they pee out those wall and it's a septic. You know? Are you?
I actually did look at that, Connor.
Uh, yeah, sure. Points well, well taken, I, 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 I think, it's just that I'm trying to stay out of the conversation, so. Just trying to guide it. Right, sorry.
Um, I think through the chair, as points have been made, like, we've had bed and breakfast within the township for years, and I've not heard of a lot of complaints. I've heard of some complaints, but I've not heard of a lot of complaints. At least, you know, as we pointed out, there are some health regulations to govern them. I think what we hear for your Airbnb are the minority of clients that use it. We don't hear about the majority that use it, that do not cause an issue, that abide by the rules, you know? So what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, is there's a lack of control over the Airbnb's or Airbnb's or Airbnb, whatever they're called. So it's just a lack of control, and I think that's, you know, what councillor Hunter was saying, the government, and some municipalities have seen it. You've got hotels and motels that are paying their property, you know, commercial taxes, commercial, you know? Whereas if I'm running a, this type of an Airbnb, I'm not paying that. But I also have to take the, the lack of control of these Airbnb, which we, if we're gonna go that way, so we have to think about the people beside the Airbnb's. If I just built a brand-new home, and the brand-new home beside me becomes an Airbnb, and there's different people in there every, every weekend because they're on the river, and they're partying up every night, there's no recourse. You know, so we, it's, again, I just bring it back to the lack of control over the, the whole Airbnb situation.
Yeah.
And I think what we read or hear about in the newspapers, reading the newspapers, are the minority. So I don't think we should be really trying to regulate the minority when majority of it, you know, have regulations that govern how an Airbnb is operated, as we're saying. But I don't think you're gonna stop people from coming there, but we have to have some protection for the people beside the Airbnb's.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as a planning committee's responsibility, long-term planning, like our official plan, we, you know, implemented, I believe it's a ten-year plan. That's a long, long way out, and I think, you know, we've spent, we still have a few issues where there are multiple properties on a single lot from the past that are, are still creating issues in the township. And I see Bill 108 personally as the potentiality for future councils to, to have issues to deal with. But to, somebody said tourists before, uh, when we were talking, I do see the good, though, I'm gonna talk out of both sides of my mouth because there, there is some good in short-term accommodations. We don't have a lot of accommodations for here as we try to bring in tourists and, and welcome people, especially with the investment we're making in the waterfront. So having some of them is, is fantastic, but I also see Bill 108 as a gateway to a bit of, a bit of a conundrum for, you know, the ten years down the road point. Yes.
Oh, councillor Cameron's ahead of me, then I just wanna make one point.
Thank you.
If you, if you, if you have the owner in the house or in the, in the building, that's your policeman right there. He's not going to, he's not going to see that his property is going to be vandalized, trashed, loud music being played at all hours, all hours of the night. That's your police right there, it's the owner. That's why, that's what I say, if the owner is in the premises, he's gonna be the policeman. He's gonna, he's going, he's going to look after his investment.
Okay, so the point that I wanna make about, I, I don't have a problem with bed and breakfasts where the owner is present, so get that out of the way. And that's, and I think Wendy's got that tied down pretty good here. Airbnb is a different cat altogether. And what bothers me is that, as I've listened to this discussion, there isn't one member of this committee that has spoken yet about the effect that it has on our, on major investors in our township. We have two motels in our township. Every Airbnb takes money out, every Airbnb rental takes money out of their pocket. We've got a motel on County Road Two, east of Johnstown, another one in Johnstown. Those guys pay big taxes, they pay them all year round, whether or not their units are full. And every time somebody goes into an Airbnb, that's one less unit that he rented tonight. Now, they may not like his, that's not the issue. If they don't like his, they can go to Presta or Brock, go to a different hotel. But that's, I, 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 I have no use for Airbnb, and I make no bones about it.
And that's what I said, do we need them?
No, we don't need them.
But you can't stop them.
Sure you can stop them, if you got a will. Got a will to stop them, you can stop them, not saying it's gonna be easy and I'm not gonna, and I'm not gonna say that it's not gonna require. A a certain amount of enforcement, and that means you have to be mean about it, you know what, that's our job.
So so can I jump in? So if if going, because this is, this is where kind of the meat of why I thought three and four should be combined is. If if I look at it from a Bill one oh eight perspective, and and we've got a large lot on our property, so I'll use my property, it was built for two homes. Or the the lot is for two homes, so if if we were to build a forty percent size home, right? What is to stop me from using that as a short term accommodation?
Enough right now.
Um but that's why I'm saying when we go back to the Bill one oh eight portion of it. When. We we need that that control, if it's for affordable housing, it should be for affordable housing.
I I couldn't agree with you more, you're you're dead on.
I don't necessarily have a. A problem with a a person who buys a home and uses it as as a as a bed and breakfast, I. Like I I don't, but I I don't think Bill one oh eight's intention is for me to be building a residential apartment on my. Home that I rent out daily or nightly or on the weekends because we live on the river and it's a great place to be.
No.
It doesn't create a problem that doesn't exist.
But we'll, Bill one oh eight, we're stuck with, we have, that's provincial law, so we got that.
Yep.
Now, now our job is to prevent you from using it for a purpose for which it was not intended.
Which is exactly what what my point was, and I think in that specific use provision, we need to make sure that somehow that it gets. If people choose to build those, that it a- accomplishes what the spirit of Bill one oh eight was, not what it could be used for. But what the spirit of Bill one oh eight was actually.
Couldn't agree with you more, which means that we really gotta be the bad guys. That's what it means, we have to be the bad guys, because you know ninety percent are gonna be used for what Bill one oh eight.
Well, I don't know that that, uh you know. Well, I mean, we have to allow, like, I'm chewing on the conversation, sorry.
Interesting, but it but 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 the point is exactly, you make the exact point, he can put. He can put a a four hundred foot square foot teeny tiny home in the back of his property on the canal bank. And he can get probably three to four hundred dollars a week out of, weekend out of it.
Yeah, I get a thousand bucks a week.
Yeah, yeah, guarantee, but that's not the purpose of teeny tiny homes, the whole purpose of teeny tiny homes is to provide places for people to live.
But maybe.
At a reasonable price.
So just devil's advocate thing, because I think you uh both Cody and and Connor have made this point, is that. Is that, does that make my housing more affordable if I turn that that rental or that backyard four hundred tiny. Square foot home into a weekly rental, does it then make my property more affordable for me as a homeowner? Like to me, that's counterproductive to the spirit of Bill one oh eight, but I think hearing them, I would agree with that.
So our job is to help you by not giving, is to help you by making not, by making sure you don't do it. We have to be the bad guys, so what?
Councilor.
Well, I think. The whole purpose of one oh eight is to accommodate. A longer term rental thing, we've been all talking about a short term term rental. It's two days, three days, all Airbnb very seldom. In or one a week, most of them are weekends or two or three days. So to you, Wendy, I don't know what the regulations are here here for one oh eight, we put in there there that we were allowed to do through units. Are we allowed to put in there a stipulation that if they're rented, that they have to be be rented on at least a one year lease? We make them that they have to be rented, if you run it, so they have to be rented out. Out as a long, long term lease, not, you can't rent them for two or three days or or a week or thirty days, and we're trying to accommodate people. In in affordable housing, make it that they gotta rent them to some somebody for a a certain length of time, can't be short term.
Wendy. Do we have that?
Uh to try, I only have an opinion, so I I will hide it.
What's the planner's?
And yeah, I think uh through through the chair, if I if I may, like um. It would be helpful if there was some type of direction from the committee, like if, no, in 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 all in all fairness, right? Because I'm I'm hearing in some cases where uh like with respect to a second dwelling. That the the feeling is that there should be a clause in there uh that that it can't be used for short term accommodation.
That's what I.
O- okay, wh- which which may be a possibility, that that would happen to, but but we really need to know if that is the. A direction that the committee wants to pursue versus, right?
Yep.
Uh so something that can be rented in for six months.
And right, and yeah, and the definition of what short term rental is and and all of that. Will that, would that come from the committee or would that come from, like would, is that something over text? Like.
Well, I think we we would need to go back to to certainly to 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 the planner with respect to that to see if 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 those particular items. You know, if that is something that could be added, but number one, we would have to have the definition of what short term accommodations.
Yeah.
Are.
If.
Within that, wi- wi- within the zoning bylaw, which currently doesn't exist.
Right, right, and so, and I think that that you're getting, we're getting to what my thought was, so like while we have no choice on Bill one oh eight. Right, we we have to allow those secondary residential units, my thought is, can we put some restrictions on? What those residential units are actually used for, and so that if Bill one oh eight's spirit is to create affordable housing, that that's what their primary use objective is.
Through through your, I, yes, I would, I I would agree, but there's, but it's a good argument of whether. Supplemental income is is received on a weekly basis uh versus mon- monthly rentals.
Right, fair enough. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I think when what the C A O is looking for is, is does the committee, is the committee prepared to provide some direction and guidance and? As I listened to the discussion, we're all over the place.
Yeah, I know, and that's part of the discussion, so trying to trying to rein it in a little bit, and I think we all recognize that that. There is some issues, but I'm not sure that we understand where where we're gonna get to some direction on how to deal with, so, yes.
If if I made Mr. Chair.
You missed.
Maybe the the question for committee.
Yes.
Maybe, do you want to manage short term accommodations? In the zoning bylaw, do you want to manage it?
Fair, fair question, so and by man, can you define manage? Cool, like, do you mean?
So so i- if if I made.
Like define smoothly?
Yes, so if you look at bed and breakfast, right, what we're saying is you can have a bed and breakfast in a commercial zone. You cannot have a bed and breakfast in a residential zone. So if we're going to allow Airbnb's uh in in residence, do you want them in residential zones? I- i- if they, you know, if if it's, it's a form of accommodation that you'd like to pursue, then should you, should you manage those friction points? Reality is to to say that. Everybody that uses an Airbnb is responsible is not reality. Because if that, if if that's correct, we wouldn't be receiving the calls that we are receiving from neighbors who are having some issues. With Airbnbs that are being operated, and there's certainly more than one in the middle of Japan. Right, like, I'm just like, that's that's the reality is, but. Do do we do we wanna put something in there that guides and and directs? Where where they are and what sort of conditions need to be in place to to balance the use of 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 that property? With the with 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 the neighbors enjoyment of of their land as well, that's that's where you're gonna create that balance.
Well, I think it's fair to say, looking at a ten year official plan, uh as a planning committee, uh that our township is gonna change a great deal over the next ten years and. Decisions that we make and how we guide them is is going to impact the way it does. Um, okay, so do we wanna manage short? Go ahead.
Well, I, through the chair, I just wanted to. I guess restate the fundamental issue here is that Airbnb is just a marketplace. It's a piece of technology that people use to connect with each other to do business, we can't. Possibly keep up with that type of technology space and play whack a mole to the point of regulating what people do with their property. If it's not Airbnb, it's gonna be a billboard, a giant tiger or bulletin board, you know, like it. It's simply a trademark name and an app that people install, and you're not gonna be able to enforce the types of things. That you want to if you have the model of Airbnb in your mind when you're writing this down. What you have to tackle it with is noise bylaws and enforcement of those. Enforcing existing bylaws, parking space limits, you know, other things that are. That have to do with the physical infrastructure in the properties and the bylaws and building codes that we already have.
So if you have a a bed and breakfast.
Maximum occupancy.
If you have a bed and breakfast, which which would be a commercial purpose. Being used in a residential area, you don't think that that should be enforced?
It's not the same thing, it's a, that's an antiquated way of looking at what an Airbnb provides as a service. Unfortunately, there's a lot, a lot of property owners in Canada that own successful or not successful properties. That runs Airbnb's that are not citizens or permanent residents of Canada. There's people that own these properties that live overseas.
Absolutely.
And you're not gonna get away, uh you're not gonna be able to stop them from exploiting every little loophole they can come up with, and. Sooner and sooner than later, lawyers for companies like Air Airbnb do start trying to protect protect their brand. If there's uh municipalities or cities that go against what they're doing. The way you can try to take the, and I'm a nerd, I'm a geek, I'm not just making this kind of thing up. The only way to really get ahead of something like this is to use the physical infrastructure and the bylaws that have to do with the conduct of the people. You can't shoo away a big corporation because it's just gonna come back with another name.
Yes, uh there there is too much emphasis on Airbnb, it's not what we're talking, we're talking short term accommodations.
Yeah, exactly, that's the issue.
And 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 a number of the points that that Connor has made is exactly what we're talking about in regulation, right?
Yeah.
For for what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
To manage that.
Kind of manage.
Parking spots, training, some 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 of those areas that balance the use of of you know, adjacent properties.
Okay, so so define my question again, so that I can ask each committee member, do we wanna manage short term accommodations?
The issue, and and what I'm saying is, if if you relate it back to, for instance, bed and breakfast where.
So stop trying to relate it to one thing.
Residential.
Yeah.
It's only permitted in commercial. Why is it only permitted in commercial?
Right.
Way of regulating.
It's a way of regulating, yes, right, because there is less impact on that, right, so I think the the idea is, where is, where is the balance? In in knowing that it, that this type of short term accommodation is going to exist, but how can we best? Set it up for success that we're not, that we're balancing the needs of all parties.
Right, and does that give you enough direction then answering that question, yes or no from committee? To come up with some ideas on how we may be able to do that?
Well, if if the committee is is interested in managing that, we've listed sort of six or seven points. Of of emphasis that that we're looking at.
Yeah.
So if if that's the agreement, we can certainly look to to formulate something. That meets the need.
You wanna manage or not? Yeah, I I guess how would we manage this discussion further?
Further, yeah, correct.
Councilor.
Oh yeah, definitely gotta manage it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Councilor, well. Connor?
I I'm saying it's too, it's too vague for for me to say yes or no.
Okay, um so I think that's good enough direction, then we can um. We'll we'll see that again at some point and we'll eat up the recommendations as they come.
We'll, we we will move to the next steps in the in the information item and we will bring forward a more formal recommendation.
It's only an hour.
Good discussion.
Good discussion, I think a very important one, so. So refresh me here, we're on number five, which is the discussion item for Edgar Resource Master Plan, Wendy?
Um at last month's meeting, the committee reviewed an information item regarding an executive resources master plan study that's been undertaken by the counties. And assisted by a technical steering committee, um they contacted Meridian Plating Study, so committee members expressed some concern. Uh and they asked staff to, so three things, my understanding was asked of staff, it's confirmed that the requirement should include bedrock resources. With an overburden of ten meters or less, um that's in the in the county's mapping. Um two is prepare a statement to express concerns with the viability of bedrock resources with ten meters of overburden. Um and suggest that the mapping only include resources with overburden of five meters or less. And three, that the statement be distributed to counties surrounding the municipality, so. Um in our research, we learned that it is a preference of the Ministry of Northern Development and Lions to include bedrock resources. With less than eight meters of overburden, overburden in the study maps. Um and also important to note that there's only mapping available to to study from um. To, that shows um overburden of zero to one meters, one to eight meters and eight to fifteen meters. Um so the planning consultant at Meridian Plating um indicated that the eight meter depth is generally assumed to be the maximum amount of overburden. That can be removed while still producing an economically viable product. Um so so I included some additional information in the um discussion item about what that information is used for and an excerpt from our um official plan. Um but should the committee still wish to distribute a statement expressing concern regarding the viability of resources with up to eight years of overburden? Um and to suggest that the mapping in the county's official plan only show bedrock resources with an overburden of five meters or less. Um I I don't know that this is going to be possible for them to do, but um I've prepared a resolution um for county's consideration.
I think I'll start with you.
Well, I I I still don't agree agree with it, I I don't know why they have a map and. That can go from zero to one and one one to eight, why they jump from a one meter cover to an eight meter cover, that's a vast. Jump in in area, and my main concern concern is, yes. Even if it's on there and it's zoned zoned in there, as you have said, it can be applied to be taken over and can be built on and stuff. But that just puts more and more burden on the township to require this study to be done done. And and the one, whoever wants to build a house or build a plant or something on there's gotta go through all this with counties and. Their minds to say, yes, this isn't feasible and we wanted it, it just creates a whole bunch more red tape. To go ahead and do something on areas that, another three meters, that's another ten, ten feet of overburden here. They did a study of the counties uh of the township here, I I would guess that would take probably thirty to forty percent of that area. Wouldn't be included any anymore, and that's a big area in a ten square mile town township to be included in something that. You gotta go through all this much more red tape to get something built on or get it used for another use in there, so. I I agree with you, it probably won't do any place, but I'd still like to see the resolution sent forward to them, but we're not. We're not really happy with the with the study that we gave.
And so support the draft the way that it's written.
More feedback. So I don't know that we really understand the issue here. Because it just seems to me that. There's there's two conflicting. Interests. And and first of all, I understand the concept that if there's more than eight meters of overburden. It's maybe not economical to develop it as a quarry. Let's use that as an example, which is your point. The problem is. That considers the interest of the guy that owns the land and wants to and and is interested in building a quarry. But if you set the limit. At anything that's less than eight meters of overburden. Then you have a lot more area in the township that's. Identified or or identified as a resource area. And that becomes contrary to the interest of the township. Because you have a larger area identified as a potential resource area and that's area that. Is gonna, you're gonna have to go through an additional layer of work before you can, for example, create a subdivision in that area. There's maybe only five meters of overburden, so it's identified as a resource area, but it would be a great place for a subdivision. But it's also a great place for a quarry. Now, which use gives, which which use holds strong? Look at the extra work you have to go through now to create the subdivision, now that you have identified that as a resource, as a as a as a resource. And and I I know all of the words say, oh, that's not the purpose here, but if you read. The some of the words say, oh, that's not the purpose. And the other places it says, well, no, it's not the purpose, but if you want to create a subdivision, you're gonna have to do this, 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 this.
That proves more economic, more value with the township than a quarry would be fifty years down the road, so.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Way too much red tape this thing's creating.
Yeah, but but we're forced to do it. So to my way of thinking, the more overburden. That's in place, I'm not interested in it, excuse me, I'm not interested in the guy that might create the quarry. I'm more interested in the township's interest in creating the subdivision. So the less area we identify, the better.
Well, that's my point.
That's his point, too.
Yeah, well, then we should be going to ten meters or twenty.
No, no, no.
Yeah, we should go on to ten meters or twenty.
Less, no.
Less.
Less. No, no, less, less gives you, less gives you less overburden.
Oh, less. So so if I if I went through, right, right, right now, the 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 mapping that exists. Really really exists for anything at point one meters to up to eight meters. Which is what they consider to be a viable overburden for 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 development. But by going by going to five meters, that anything, any overburden above or more than five meters. Is is considered not to be viable in 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 the resolution. And then the the subdivision certainly is something or or residential development or or some other land use. Would would proceed without the requirement of a study.
Yeah, so like if it was five, it would be recognized, five and less, it would be recognized as an aggregate resource. And you'd have to have a study, five and more or five and above, you wouldn't have to recognize it as an aggregate resource and.
It wouldn't be on the mapping, the the, but I think the reality is that as as the mapping exists now, there is no differentiation. Totally e- easy way to differentiate what's five meters and six meters and seven meters. If 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 I'm understanding that correctly.
And the reason these standards exist is because of the technology that they use to measure depth of overburden. I mean, the the these maps are all created by airplanes. Uh, with with technology that that has the the ability to, as it flies over, to sense the depth of overburden to bedrock.
Yeah, through through the area and and it's not well defined, right?
No.
It's just, right, this area is is roughly this, it falls into that. And and therefore that's that's why it would be proposed to 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 do that study. So what that actual depth is and whether, you know, whether it is viable or not viable.
Yeah, but that that puts your whole future of of your subdivision, your your subdivision. Your hundred acre, your hundred lot subdivision, that puts it at the mercy of the technology that said that that's a good area for resource development. And that and that may not even be accurate. I mean, those maps are not all that accurate, there's no question about that.
For the whole. The whole whole problem with this whole mapping. Thing the way to me, the way they're defining it is. They're putting this emphasis that this is an aggregate resource now, if. Users think subdivision, township wants to create subdivision or. Or somebody wants to build five houses in in this area, well, now I gotta go and prove. This is more viable to the township than what the area was. But if I can win there and I say, yeah, there's good rock under there, I'm gonna, I want to open a quarry here. I still gotta go through about fifteen studies to prove that I can open a quarry here. So all it's doing is. If you're gonna create a quarry, you still have all the studies you got got it done regardless for its own aggregate resource or for one meter or ten meters. But this whole mapping, all it's doing doing is putting more more burden on the any other developments, gotta be there. Like, I don't see the point of it.
You know, we are obligated to do it.
Well, I, but I don't see where the ministry's coming with this point. Like, if it's a viable, if it's a real close. Rocks on the surface and stuff and it's in a good location, somebody's gonna try to develop develop a quarry or or gravel pit there or sand pit there. If that that that's there, but it it stops all the other development.
But 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 John is gonna, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
No, no, keep going, I.
The counterpoint to that argument, and I'll tell you what the counterpoint to that argument is this. Where the giant tiger warehouse is located, I mean, Cameron and I walked that land way back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And bedrock came right almost to surface as we walked that land from County Road two to the railroad track and east west, we walked it all. And the bedrock came right to the surface. Now, if that land had been identified on an aggregate resources map, which it should. Because the overburden was right at surface. Nothing could have been done with it. As it turned out, it was exactly the kind of location that Giant Tiger was looking for. Because it didn't have to go forty feet to get solid foundations.
The whole thing like that didn't change, I walked walked that firestone and.
No, it came right to service. So the point that he's making is absolutely right. I mean, all this resource study is gonna do. Is is make it harder to do anything, but yet we're obligated to do the study. So to my mind, the the less area that we can identify, the better.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, so 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 in order to get to the less area. Gotta say, we're not gonna identify an area unless the bedrock is within ten feet. Very few areas where the bedrock will come. Above ten feet.
What's the number? Five meters?
The only mapping that's available to determine what the the overburden is is from the. What's it called? The. Aggregate resources inventory report one eighty-three for Leeds in Redville, and that's the main source drifting this out, drifting this same as overburden. Used in aggregate study, so that's the only mapping we have available, and it's got a map. Where the overburden is zero to one meters, it has a map that shows one to eight meters and has a map that shows eight to fifteen meters. Now, the eight to fifteen meters is proposed to not be included in in the county's official plan mapping. So it's only gonna show aggregate resources where the overburden is between zero and eight meters. Now, if somebody wanted to develop within the influence area of those aggregate resources, as councilor had reported, they would have to complete a study. They will either have to show that that resource is not feasible, maybe it's eight meters and other township, like we think that only five meters is feasible. So and they can say this is eight meters of overburden, not economically feasible, okay, study said, you're never gonna develop, use that aggregate resource anyways. We can develop here, or they can show that the proposed land use for development serves a greater long-term public interest. And issues of public health and safety. Uh, can can be addressed, so a subdivision is more important than building a quarry to the township. So, right, you can develop a subdivision, a single severance may not be more important to the township than that aggregate resource. Remember, these are non-renewable resources, we can't grow more rock, we have to protect them.
Yeah, and I. For me, that was all very clear, it's just in the resolution, it says the five meter maximum and the mayor suggested a tenth foot. That was the.
The the five meter maximum was requested by the committee at the last.
Right, yeah. I would guess asking if you were wanting that change.
No, no, I'm.
It's a draft, right? So we are discussing a draft, so. Okay, so. Anyone else? While we're on, Connor, Councilor Law?
Nope.
Good.
Well, Neil, I'm not even sure it's gonna be a concern. But somewhere down the road, if the price of aggregate. Is ten times what it is today. Further down, it's more economical, dig it up now. I see, you know, the price of gold keeps going up now, they're now they're going back to gold mines that were abandoned years ago. But but I. I think as a township, we should be looking at more subdivisions than aggregate. And and that being said, I do know that, like, oh, good egg, it's gone. But anyway.
We're, yeah, through the chair, I I I think it's important as a rural township to leave a possibility open that we'll have cities scrambling for the resources we have. Because we have ready access to. Boring at the port, there's lots of companies now shipping. Gravel and other aggregates instead of train or or truck, and we also have access to train and truck, so. I I think we have to protect for the future what we happen to take it out of the ground.
Another discussion?
All right, you're right, you have to protect it. How much to protect that's my my point. We're in a very. Vulnerable position in this area, eastern territory, not very close to the surface. Some great sand resources still left. Not so much in this. They are targeting Augusta, they have a lot of good sand resources available, yeah, they got to protect it, but I don't think we have to protect. Everything that. We got, we got so much of it in this area. I can see in Toronto, I know why they're doing it, because in Toronto, in Appleton area. The lands that build on so much that the area where it is, they're trying to protect it because now they gotta bring it in from eastern area or western area. Northern area, they gotta bring it into, but I think we're getting through and it won't because there should shore it up 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 there. They want to bring their. Find everything down here to shut your your development down here. Kind of like the developing countries saying South America shouldn't cut any trees down for the farmers to expand their their fields because. We got lots here, we can sell them, you shouldn't develop down there, so.
Okay, so what do you need from me, Wendy? You need this to move the draft to be approved?
Future, so no staff recommendation on the table of my research. In in doing my research, I didn't see a need for it, but the committee would like to. Recommend that resolution to council and how to distribute it, then it's certainly prepared and we could certainly do that.
So let's just move around, okay, what Cody asked. Um, would like to, would we like to as a committee approve the draft resolution to be distributed? Yes. It's valid.
For we're selling five meters.
Yes.
Yeah, we're.
Yes.
Then, good idea.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna go anyplace, but at least it just shows that we're not.
I'm gonna put my, I'm gonna put my ass, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign with the M, I guess.
I concur.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, by all rights, fine with me.
So five, so so we'll move it through and you will send it to the appropriate.
Well, it's gonna, this is the recommendation.
Just wanna come back to council and then council.
We weren't happy with it, we get an argument over some land down the way that we want to use for something else, we can. Future council going back, see the council back there four years ago told you they weren't happy with.
Yeah.
Eight meters.
Yes. We've made it clear. Okay, and so we find ourselves at. The work, there is nothing under the work portion, there is nothing under the rack portion, and we're on to the additional item. Uh, which came up, which we thought was a good idea, add to try to receive some direction, I believe. Uh, from committee to approach our neighbors or at least send out some kind of a eloquently worded. Uh, summary of the work that Mr. Courtney has done with the permanent control issue to our surrounding neighbors to see if they may. Have some uptake on a similar program. So. Fairly worth it, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
And so if everyone has had the time to read through the document. Um, the goal of of this, or at least what I'm hoping to get from committee is that they will direct staff to summarize. Like I just said, summarize well, Mr. Courtney's email and and some of the information and send it out to our surrounding neighbors. Uh, to see if they'll buy into the same sort of program we've been doing for the last three or four years. Um, so let's open it up for discussion. Do you want to start, Mr. Mayor?
Well, um, of course, Mr. Court, in the in these few little notes that he's given us. Uh, he centers basically on the toxicity of the guano that comes from these animals, the the birds. And the and the and the devastation that you see on surface. What he hasn't done in in his report is focus on the tremendous devastation that it causes to the fish stocks. And the devastation that it causes to the fish stocks, which you don't see because it's all underwater. But it's all been measured by Ministry of Natural Resources in three or four or five studies. And that's, you know, I I mean, and I've got others, other documents that he provided. That, you know, I I I. I I'm happy to, I'm happy to write letters to the fellow mayors and point out to them what we're doing and ask them. You know, to give some consideration at their councils to to helping us with this issue. But it all has to be couched so far in protection of property.
Anyone else?
I, yeah, yes. I think it's gonna be hard for self-dun das to come on board because. Whatever the ministry did last year of opening up for the season, it's worked down there. Has it really? Very, very successful. I've seen one. Comment, one. I know, one from the dam down to McDonald Island. Not that long, but and that's American side, too. That is on the, that's going right across. I've never seen it such cleaned up. Now, I don't know if it's because of them opening up last year for the. I've never seen it such cleaned up. Now, I don't know if it's because of them opening up last year for the first time. No idea, because I haven't talked to too many people. It took, you know, I heard one particular gang took thirty-five, but we had a whack out. The buoys were destroyed, island was just open the stage, it just a crying change, it was all sand. Used to swim and dock your boat there. Beautiful, it's just weird, and it's. There's none around, seriously, down there.
Yeah. Oh, there's a few, there's a few by the two islands between. Um that's several, there's a groost tree there, and there's, you know, twenty or so that hang out, you know, between Cardinal and Yerqua.
In in that little bay, you mean?
Uh right where the two islands that just were turned over.
Close, yeah, yeah, but nothing you see, you know, I'm nothing, like, from where I go from the dam down, I'm just going from the.
Yeah, I don't know. I know.
West or east and from to McDonald's Island. And I mean, you can sit right, I'm all for it. Oh, you know, I'm the more the merrier, but I think it's been very successful of what they when they opened it up last year.
Council.
There's uh along the waterfront, uh Cardinal waterfront uh between uh between uh. Cast ingredient and uh in the north, in the west gap, there's about five. Gardens in there, which is.
That was your part, sir, in your part. There in twenty-two days, he shot sixty-nine of them, so.
Yeah.
There'd be a few of them around.
Up here for some reason.
Okay, so I think uh just to try to move the discussion along, so what what I'm looking for is just direction so that we can approach our neighbors to make a suggestion. Sure. A summary, so.
I think especially at Rockaway, because. You're not hard to see up there.
And who would we like the uh who would we like it to be penned under? Would we, are we asking the mayor to take this on?
Well, I don't mind. If if the C O, the C O wants to direct letters, that's fine too. It doesn't matter if you got some C O.
Referring that was a staff function, or would you?
Uh through through the chair, if uh if if it works to go under the uh signature of the mayor, that's 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 fine.
Um right, so I think that that would be my ask of everyone. Are they okay with that?
Yeah, I do. I have another county council. There should be a county issue. You gotta get on it.
Actually, it should be.
Yeah.
Um.
Have there been any, what's your reaction of the uh? The people where the where these birds are being shot, what's your reaction to the the people around there?
Mr. Mayor, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, uh we did get a memo uh and he spoke to eight, I think, or seven uh right in the area that he had uh uh. Cut down some trees last year, and he went door to door with a handout, not this handout, but a different one. And and he's he spoke to seven out of nine, I think, was the report. Out of the seven that he spoke to, everybody agreed with the program, thanked us that we were doing the program. Appreciated the fact that finally somebody was taking an action. Now, I don't think a lot of people are totally familiar with last year's program that the ministry put into effect. But for certain, the the ones that John spoke to this within the last three weeks, they they were all. He said it was a great reception.
For the reason I ask is, I don't know, was it a month ago we got that? I got a flyer in my mail.
Yep.
About the um, so I didn't know if that was a complaint that prompted that, no, it was political, but.
Well, I think um uh provincially, they've decided that, you know, an open call is is, you know, what what is. You know, what should be done, and I think uh as a township, we've supported uh a little different uh cause. Uh I believe maybe it was the mayor and councillor Cameron, maybe at Amol if I'm not mistaken, or Roma. Uh a year or two ago, made a presentation on uh Mr. Courtney and and, you know, being uh. A township function or at least hiring a trapper to responsibly uh call birds instead of having, you know, just a big free-for-all. Uh was probably the the right and and best way to go about it. Uh wasn't adopted, I don't think, by the by the province at all, had decided to go the open call route, but. We uh certainly have kept Mr. Courtney on, we're quite happy with, you know, the results as a council that that we've seen from uh his work and. Like councillor Dilba says, uh uh some of the cults working uh to the east of us too, so. Okay, so yes, we're good, yes.
Good. Absolutely.
Yes, so that's done. Uh and we find ourselves now past that, and we're on to inquiries, notice of motion. Does anybody have an inquiry or a notice of motion?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh I'd like to go last.
Okay, anyone else?
Inquiry. For. I just wanted to announce about on the eighteenth of September, is this the time?
Sure.
Eighteenth of September, your um members of council will get a a formal invite. On eighteenth of September at ten o'clock, we're gonna do the ribbon cutting for the the dog park in the new dug-in.
To December, what time is that again?
Ten AM.
Ten AM.
And because of um. We're in like the fourth wave.
Yes.
Um we're just restricting it to the ribbon cutting. We had plans to maybe have like a a barbecue and get together, but um. It just at this time, I don't think of the public council interested would be appropriate.
I'll eat a hamburger any day.
Ten AM.
Fair enough.
Ten AM.
So all councils welcome.
Thank you.
And staff.
Uh here.
Like to see some staff there.
Hearing no others, so must, oh, hold on.
I have one, I guess I'll bring it up here. Ingredient Center with her uh walking crack, I had quite a few. Thanks from some of the hockey fathers and mothers that are down down there that walk in the walking track and. And walk around a bit while their kids are are playing hockey and stop down time because something happened on the ice, and they're stopped and. And stand and watch and see what's happening on the ice while they're they're walking and and their our staff is being sent up to. They stop for a minute coming up and and chasing after them, telling them they can't stop, they gotta keep walking, walking, and I think this is getting. Carried extremes that. You know, I never have agreed that you couldn't walk and watch the hockey games off that walking track. Walking tracks are built to walk on, but there's still lots of room to stand.
Do we have an inquiry then, councillor Hunter?
Well, my my inquiry is. I think we should be. Situation that's something. For the whether or not this. Posting on that, you can't stand and watch hockey up there, shouldn't be reconsider reconsidered, so.
But we had an awful discussion about that.
Sorry, so let's not have the discussion right now, though. Let's, do we wanna bring that back then to CDC for discussion next meeting then? Okay, so Wendy, if we can have that on our agenda for a discussion about the uh walking track use at the Ingredient Center.
Mr. Chair, I I I'm wondering if that may not be better suited at the Public Works, Internal Services Facilities meeting where.
Yeah, it's this planning committee, I suppose that's true.
Where 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 Mr. Spencer would be present.
Yes, and who is the chair? Is that yours and you want that?
I am, well, yes, I'll uh, yeah, we can, yeah, we can put it on, but I'll 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 tell you, there's gonna be some discussion on it.
I think it will, council wants it as a discussion at the time. Um. Be a big loss. Are there any further uh injuries yet?
Um has there been any um? Inquiries about the odor that is coming from the former Bingo Palace?
God, one. The morning.
Uh to staff, have we had uh any contact? Regarding orders from um Purple Farm?
Chair, I. I'm not wearing formal. Complaints with respect to that, but I uh would certainly inquire with staff.
Thank you.
So for like, just sorry, going on from where discussion lasted, to where your um whatever that farm was, that's it. When this, he said in the site plan agreement, you know, there could be zero emissions. Is there such a clause in this site plan agreement with Purple Farms that zero emissions?
Point of information, Mr. Chair. Let's not turn it into a discussion, though. I'm working really hard to keep inquiries, so yes, yes.
I'm just asking questions.
Yes.
So the point of information is this, that whole concept of of odor emissions is controlled by Ministry of the Environment Kingston Office. And the staff here have a phone number for the individual from the Kingston Office who is in charge of this area. I don't know who it is, but if there are complaints about orders from that location. The proper uh recompense is directly to the Ministry of the Environment, who's responsible for enforcing their own orders.
Okay, great.
It's their orders.
Only need to know.
Okay. And anyone, anyone?
Yes, I got two.
Fire one.
Okay, so the first is an inquiry. I'd just be interested to know if there are any members of council or other members of the committee. That would be interested in joining uh the mayor at the one hundred and sixty-six Spencerville Fair Stationery Parade. Now, I've never been in a stationary parade before, so I don't know exactly what to do. But I'm on told that it will be at twelve o'clock on Saturday, and you should also be aware that. The Saturday afternoon from twelve until I think it's something like four, the fairgrounds will be open. That will be the in-person day of the one hundred and sixty-sixth Annual Spencerville Fair. And uh this morning at county council, uh I invited all the other mayors of the county to join us. I know that Mayor Baker has responded, he will be here. I've invited uh him to join us, however many of you may come. Uh to be uh as part of that stationary parade. So that's the first thing. Just let me know, because I have to let the parade organizer know uh how many of us there will be. I'm not sure. And by the way, I have had it clarified that um that we can provide candies for the kids that drive by us. And so I've asked the C O if he could arrange to have that available. So if anybody else would like to come, I'm just opening up to members of the committee as well as council. Uh now, the next thing is a different kind of issue, Mr. Chairman, and I'm just gonna bring it up. So I'm I'm bringing it up as a concern, and I it is a notice uh of motion of some sort, but I don't know how to classify it. And it goes something like this, we have a process called a zoning bylaw amendment. Where we can amend the bylaw. And we also have a committee called the Committee of Adjustment, which can make adjustments to side yards and different things. And they deal with things called minor variances. Now, up to this point in time, we seem to call these processes into play. Sometimes before the fact and sometimes after the fact. Now, let me explain what I mean by that. If I'm going to build a house, and I know that the place that I wanna put the house is too close to the side yard. And I'm not gonna be able to meet the side yard um requirements, I can apply to the Committee of Adjustment. Before I build the house and see if the Committee of Adjustment will give me a minor variance to that standard. So that's going to the Committee of Adjustment before the fact. It seems to me that we're finding a lot of situations where these kinds of issues are coming to the Committee of Adjustment. Or zoning bylaw amendments after the fact. And I would just like to ask the committee to endorse my request to have that investigated by the by staff. Are these legitimate processes to take place after the fact, or should these processes? Committee of Adjustment, zoning bylaw amendments, always be taking place before the fact? Do I do I make the issue clear? Maybe not. I'm trying.
Uh I think we're opening up a pretty.
Yeah, that's it. All I'm asking is to be looked at.
I bring it up next year, you see. I think we should have it as a big open discussion, though, as.
Yeah, and I got no problem with that.
Yeah, but next year needs to.
So there's one.
That's a good one.
So just. I'm not even sure what to call it. Okay, so. Question period, there's nobody online, we have no closed session, I need a mover for adjournment, Mr. Mondler, I need a second here, Cody. And all in favor?
I have.